Minute.
One minute?
One minute. Less than one minute now. Forty, forty seconds.
Mine says five fifty-nine.
I know. I did that too.
Go ahead.
Read update. I'm not ready for no trick or treat yet.
Be against the law. Especially with all the horrific scenes of murder.
I know.
Okay, it's six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to order. Rob, call the roll, please.
Ms. Leece.
Here.
Mrs. Sweet.
Here.
Mr. Bear.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. DeVoli. Mr. Hannah.
Here.
Counsel does have a quorum. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is the regular session of the Enin Village Council, and this is Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any additions by counsel to our agenda tonight?
Motion to excuse Mr. DeVoli.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor, there's something I would like to communicate to the public later.
Okay, I'll put it under communications.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Did we discuss the flood, the Corps of Engineers already?
We can go ahead and bring that up. I'm not sure whether we did it the last meeting or not. You want to give a quick report on that?
We can try between three of us, I think.
Okay, that sounds good. Kevin, just go ahead and put that under administrative. The Sunnybrook Trail, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else? Let's go into the minutes of the Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. If you're happy, again, with those contents, then I would entertain a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
The minutes are approved as presented. Financial report. Rob, good evening. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Financial reports for the month of August have been distributed. The books have been closed and settled. Fund totals as of August thirty-one are: General Fund, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents; Street Fund, twenty-four thousand, two sixty-three, fifty-three; Police Levy Fund, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-four cents; Our Special Revenue Fund for the Police is eight thousand, two eleven, thirty-three; Water Fund is four hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and nineteen cents. Total of all funds available in the checking account is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-nine cents. Nothing too special to report for August except for, we have, we have received both halves of real estate settlement. We have received the rollback for both manufactured homes and real property from the state of Ohio. So our real estate collections totaled this year are all received.
Are all received?
Are all received. So we actually collected just a little bit more, not much, but anticipated, and that could have been from delinquent previously, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So really, we're right on in our estimates for collection of those, I would say. Are there any, Rob, any of the revenues that look, I'm looking at, these basically were about sixty-seven percent through the year, and that's what most of these are lining up to. So are we good there?
We're just a tick ahead on most things. We are a little bit behind in mayor's court from what we had thought we would be.
Gotcha.
Based on last year's, and that's just a function of how the cases have gone. But our other lines are looking right where we said what they would.
So total, we've received about seventy-five percent, it looks like, of all funds estimated. Okay.
And that, that's front-heavy because of real property.
Yes, because of the property taxes.
Our, our collections on, on gas tax, they, they've been pretty steady. We've been fluctuating a little bit on license fees. I'm not, not certain why. We, we don't get any reports on what's all included in that, like how they, how the actual licenses that are issued each month vary, but we're a little bit low.
And maybe it's when we are sent those collections as well.
It could be, and since the state has gone to two-year license fees on some.
Yes.
I think we're going to have dips like this because some people are going to pay the two years.
Okay, very good.
And that, that would explain why we were a little bit ahead last year.
Good.
Unless there are any questions on that.
I'll move that we accept the bank reconciliation for August as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Your report has been approved as presented, and you have a resolution to present tonight as well. This is an annual resolution that we always get. I'll let you do the explanation, though.
This is an annual resolution that we do each year. In, in July, you approved a resolution based on my estimates for next year's revenue plus our estimate for next year's appropriations. Those numbers are then submitted to the county, and the county budget commission approves those, which they did. But part of their work is to have us accept this resolution for rates for the following year, and that, excuse me, guys. That lists what our, our real property tax collections are going to be for the following year based on what levies we have on the books. So if you look on page two of the sheet, you see the amounts that will come for the general fund and for the police fund, noticing that the police levy fund doesn't have a number in that second column because we do not collect any inside millage in the village of Enin for police levy. All of our police funds, real property collections come from levied taxes. The general fund does get some from inside millage. Go to the third page. This lists all of the levies that we currently have on the books. So you see two police levies and then the current expense levy that goes to the general fund. Please note that of the two of the three police levies that are still in the books, this is the last year of collections for the first one. So that levy will need to be on the ballot next year. The second one, the last year of collections for that, is next year. So that will need to be on the ballot the year after.
Gotcha. So you have Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, which is accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, and we would need a motion to suspend the three-reading rule to pass this resolution.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three-reading rule on Resolution the two thousand and twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Now, we need a motion and a second to pass Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash ten.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
On the third page, when you mentioned the, the two police levies that will be needing on the ballot next year and the year after, those are renewals, not new. So there's just a continuation, correct? I just want the public to understand that, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
If that is what councils wish, to put those on the ballot again as renewals, that's what they would be.
Thank you.
And those, those would continue to collect the same amount that they collect now, so the millage that's voted on would technically be less. The millage that's collected would technically be less than what was initially passed.
Correct. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for our fiscal officer? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Kevin, I'll turn it over to you. Good evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, residents, first item on my agenda is the mayor's court report for the month of August. There was five traffic cases. Total funds received for the current month was two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Year-to-date, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Total remitted to the state, current month, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Year-to-date, one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Total remitted to the village, current month, two thousand, sixty-two dollars. Year-to-date, fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-five, seventy-three. Total dispersed for the month, two thousand, one hundred and nine, two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, and year-to-date, sixteen thousand, eight fifty-five, seventy-three.
I'll move that we accept the mayor's court report as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
That report is approved as presented.
All right. Trick or treat is set for Saturday, October twenty-fifth for the county, six to eight P.M., and usually the village follows what the county does, so I don't know if you need that.
Let's do a motion to, to make it official.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mr. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Leece.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweet.
Yes.
All right, we'll get that on our website and Facebook as well. So the blood drive went very well again. We had that on August twenty-eighth. There was, the goal was to get twenty-nine, I guess, people signed up. There was thirty-one. Enin does a heck of a job every time. It seems like they're, they're pretty pleased with Enin. So the next blood drive is Monday, October twenty-seventh, twelve-thirty to six-thirty. If anybody's interested, it's on donortime.com. You can get set up on, set yourself up an appointment for Monday, October twenty-seventh, twelve-thirty to six-thirty. Hydro and flushing is going well. Talked to Jason today. They're gonna, it looks like they're gonna finish Old Enin at the end of the week and then start on Indian Mountain Estates right after that. So we haven't, I have not heard, gotten too many calls of colored water, so knock on wood. They're doing a good job, so. But we're just starting to. So if it probably gets colored water, we'll just, we take the calls and, and we just let them know to turn the outside spigot on until it runs clear, and that way it doesn't get inside.
And if the laundry is ruined with rust color, we still have those little packets of magic detergent that takes it out?
Yep.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay.
So, so as of right now, everything is going well on that, so. And I think you wanted to talk about Sunnybrook Trail with our Corps of Engineers, so.
Yeah. Go ahead. You can just.
I was not here with that.
Oh, you didn't go on that. Right, I'll turn it over to you then. Sorry.
Okay. We were fortunate enough to finally get the Corps of Engineers in after about an eight-year request to them to come to the village for our water issues, particularly towards Sunnybrook Trail, Cardinal Avenue, cul-de-sac, and actually over on Fowler Road. We, we looked at how it originates into the township itself. So the Corps was very informative. They were very interested. We had some pictures from back in the two thousand and seventeen, I think it was, when we had the last significant flooding area back in, at least in Alk Meadows. The history, as I moved here in seventy-eight and on Sunnybrook Trail, so we're able to give a little bit of history to the, to the Corps about how the small creek down there can get our fire department out in boats to get our people out of there. So while it is a, to them, a, a small creek, they were very helpful, it seemed like, with the, the information that they were taking and, and doing their due diligence on the possible flow of water, also on, on the dams that have been, or not dams, the bridges that have been replaced, how much water can go through those. So it'll be interesting to see what they actually come back with as far as a, an overall survey of just our, our situation.
Yeah, so I want to reiterate, we're very fortunate that we were able to get them to come out because little old Enin, when you talk about flood incidences and the, the actual property damage compared with other places in the United States where there's millions and billions of damage that's sustained, so very fortunate. This process that they're going to do is they're going to study what's going on with possible solutions. This particular study does not say we're going to come in and fix a problem, but we're going to look at it. The best part about it is there's no contribution needed by the village. This is all federal-funded money. So we're, again, very fortunate. And if you don't live down there, you probably, which I do, I live on Sunnybrook, but if you don't live down there, you may not be familiar with it. But when it floods, it, it floods. It's very substantial. So Mr. Bear in the back shaking his head, he was a time or two who was on a boat pulling people out of houses. So we're just excited that this project has continued, and we'll see what they come up with, so. Kevin, anything else?
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Questions for our administrator?
The playground's looking very nice, Kevin, with the new, new equipment down there. Pass on to all of our guys, our new, our, our thanks for the work they put in down there. It's, it actually does look like a park, and it's, it's our baby steps on trying to get the park actually moving where people can come in and enjoy it, and.
It's being used.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's busy. People want to see the new equipment, and they want to have their kids play on it.
I'm just hoping once we get that corn down, we can get more people actually making, well, doing walks around the, the perimeter there and, and seeing the creek and everything down at Warden's Ditch and, and just enjoying part of that.
It's only going to get better.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Chiefwise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, we'll start off with the top of your stack there is the traffic stops for last month and this month for when, what warnings we had given out. Then if you go to page five, you'll have your monthly stats. For the month of August, we had forty-seven calls, five assists with law enforcement, two assists with other agencies, and four assists with fire department. There was one warrant arrest, sixty-two traffic stops with sixty-two warnings issued, four citations to municipal court, and ten citations to mayor's court. We had six, six reports, one domestic, and one overdose, and one theft. We had at least two incidents where we had action on our Flock cameras, which I'll go back to that. We had sixty-eight details and sixty-nine business checks for the month. I spoke with Flock several times this week. They're in the process of trying to extend our trial period till after the November election. That way, if it does pass and we, we decide to keep them, they're not tearing them down and having to put them back up and start over. So they're in the process of trying to extend it till, actually, the first council meeting in November. So.
Great.
Because they're in total agreement, it doesn't make sense to take them all down and then have to put them all back up. I made a trip to Bo-Towns and Ford today to try to get an idea of when the, we're going to get their car, car back. Got some rather good news. They had to replace the turbocharger, the cam shafts, basically rebuilding everything, but it's all covered under warranty. So basically, the only bill we have for this incident right now is twenty-five hundred dollars for the road differential, so, which we approved.
I was waiting on the, where the good news was coming.
It's been all bad so far.
I was going to wait for you to tell us that it wasn't there.
Twenty-five hundred compared to about eight thousand is what we're, what we're looking at, so that's good news in my books. They're saying that projected, we should have the car back the week of the twenty-second, so a week, about a week and a half, two weeks.
Good deal.
This year?
Yes. Yes. They've got the parts ordered. As soon as the parts come in, they, they give about a week to get them all put in, so.
Good, good news.
Shortly.
Has that been historic with those? Have you heard any other people have any similar issue?
You know, when you drive the vehicles, the way law enforcement drives them, you're always having, you always have issues.
Understood. I just was.
I don't know whether that year cars had any more problems than any other year or not. I haven't heard of anything. I mean, but all, all departments that, that have the cars, they all start costing the department's money as soon as they get a couple of years old.
And what year is that?
That's a two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
So.
All right. Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, yes. Like Kevin was saying, trick or treat is the twenty-fifth. Also, on the twenty-fifth, from ten A.M. to two P.M., we have our drug take-back day for the second half of the year, which will be here at the, at the police department. So anybody that wants to bring any pills, capsules, basically anything other than liquids and needles, they can't take those.
Okay.
So just stop hitting on that day. We take them, put them in a box, and then we take them to the DEA the following Monday.
Good deal.
What was that date?
Ten to two.
October twenty-fifth.
Ten A.M. to two P.M.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, ten to two.
Also, I talked to Deputy Appel at the school today. Normally, the school does a trunk-or-treat the weekend before trick or treat in the mor, during the morning for, for the little kids. So that, they're still planning on that. They don't have a set date yet, so as soon as they get that, he'll let me know.
Good.
And that's all I have.
You've got the badges against breast cancer.
Yes, I have Heroes versus Breast Cancer softball tournament. The eleventh year we've done it is this coming weekend. Down at the VFW, we've got eleven teams from eight different agencies this year. Food truck rally on Saturday morning, and then Sunday, we have a car show and a Jeep show from noon to four. They're saying that there is no fee to get your cars, cars or Jeeps in. They just want to get more people down to, down to the event, so.
And that's something you and your wife, Suzie, started?
We started that, I started it, well, eleven years ago.
Eleven years ago.
When, when my wife got diagnosed, so, yes.
Awesome.
Lot of raffle stuff. Lot of, we actually got, we got one donation for round-trip tickets for two anywhere in the United States, for airline tickets. Don't ask me how they got them, but one of the airlines donated them to us, so.
Awesome.
We'll gladly raffle them off. Hockey, hockey tickets, baseball tickets.
Good deal.
So a little bit of everything.
What time does that event start Saturday?
It starts Saturday morning from eight A.M. till dark, and then we come back Sunday morning at eight A.M. and go till dark again.
And then is there a certain time for the raffle? Someone was asking.
They're going to do, I think they said that they were going to do about half of them in the, on the afternoon or the evening of Saturday, and then the rest of them on Sunday. So that they have some for both days. I do believe that they're going to do a live auction, but I don't know what time at that point yet. We'll put it on the Facebook, the Heroes versus Breast Cancer Facebook page when we have an exact time for the live auction, so.
It's good calls.
Yeah.
If you've not been down there for that, I, I'd recommend at least you come down and, and show your support for the first responders. You see them in a lot of different light down there, some good, some not. A lot of sore, sore joints the, the following Monday, but it's good to see everybody down there and the brotherhood and sisterhood that, that exist during the tournament ninety-nine percent of the time. So it's a good time, good time for all, everybody.
Chief, anything else?
Nope.
Questions for Chief?
I have two questions.
Okay.
One, I was asked on the drug take-back, do they just bring them in the bottles, or do they put all of them in one plastic bag and bring them in, or does it matter?
It doesn't matter. If they have the bottle, if they're in the bottles, we'll dump them out and throw the bottles away. Most people want to take them out because they don't want their labels just thrown in the trash.
So they can just put them in one baggie and bring the baggie in?
Yep.
Okay. And then the second question, based off of the monthly stats you had and the report that fiscal officer gave that the mayor's court were down a little low based on what we had budgeted, was any of the four cases that was sent to municipal, could they have been taken to mayor's court or not?
So one of them possibly could have, but there was, it was more of a, when I'm talking to Christie, they requested that if we have an issue where we're going to have to have a translator, they want those sent to municipal court.
Okay.
So.
So that is something you're looking at and working with the officers to make sure they're coming to mayor's court?
So we, we had a little sit-down, and we had a discussion about tickets and how they were written and, and where they went, and we're all on the same page now, and I think our officers understand which ones can go to mayor's court, which ones can't, and if they don't know, then they can ask.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because I know we had some new officers.
There's a list in every car of what, what can be, can and cannot be heard by mayor's court, so.
And then Amanda, okay, she's not fully trained yet, correct? Or she is?
She is, she's, she's fully trained. She's, she's fully functioning as a peace officer. She is actually in her sixteen-hour refresher today and tomorrow, and then she'll have to take a state test online.
Okay.
So, but yeah, she is, she is fully functioning as, as an officer now.
Okay. So then would she be working like a first shift or don't know yet?
So we're going to keep her for now working so that we can work her in the school, into the schools with, with the sheriff's office, having both, both agencies represented, which I think is very important, to keep that with the schools. And then that way she can also answer calls during the day, and so that, at this point in time, that's what we're looking to keep her on, on like a eight to four time, timeframe.
And I think eventually, once she gets off her probation, then we can see some adjustments in our scheduling as needed.
Yep.
But the, the next step with her, she passes this, she gets put off or taken off probation, gets her final appointment, and then we kind of go from there.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
The total calls at the top, that is, is that anytime you guys receive a call from dispatch?
It's anytime we receive a call from dispatch, anytime somebody flags us down, calls the non-emergency number if they're, if they happen to be here and, and answer it, the office phone.
Those are significantly down from the prior months.
Yeah, they, we did.
Forty-seven this month, eighty-six before, I think a hundred before that, so.
Yeah, it, we, we did go down this month.
Any other questions?
It was cold. People wanted to stay in.
That is, that's a lot.
Flag you down.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Mrs. Sweet, I went right past you. I apologize, so I'll turn it over to you.
It's okay, because I sort of wanted it towards the end anyway. My communication is just to, before our next council meeting, there is a date called Constitution Day. It's September seventeenth, and I just wanted to tell everyone to remember, September seventeenth is Constitution Day. The Constitution was ratified in seventeen eighty-seven, so we are two hundred and thirty-eight years old by the Constitution.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That's a very important day.
It is a very important.
And before our next.
Actually, a lot of, a lot, I'm sorry, a lot of places actually require the schools to celebrate that in some way or another.
As they should. And before our next council meeting is also nine eleven.
True, Patriot Day.
Okay, so we have no committee reports or old or new business. We have several folks here this evening, and we do have one gentleman that had requested, per the deadline, to be put on the agenda, Mr. Doug White. Mr. White, if you want to come forward, and if you would state your address for us so we know where you live, and you will have five minutes to speak on the topic of your choice.
Good evening, and thank you for listening.
You're welcome.
I'm Doug White. I grew up in Enin and graduated Greenin.
So we might have been classmates.
Way back, way back, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Kevin, I know we've talked to you several times concerning this particular incident, well, ongoing situation, and that is parking on the grass, residential vehicles parking on their lawns, front or side yards, instead of the driveway. on their lawns, front or side yards, instead of the driveway. Now, I live in South Enen on Cimarron Trail. So this problem has only gotten larger the last five, six months. We drive around often unnoticed, so I'd like to find some kind of solution. We don't have one at this point, I understand. Okay. And you're working on that, third party?
Through a third party.
All right, very good. I called Springfield Code Enforcement, talked to them lengthy, and they do not allow parking on the grass, nor does New Coralisle. But in speaking with Springfield, they said that due to the current influx of people, that it's not uncommon in certain sections of town to have more than one family living in a single residence.
Yep.
You've got four, five, or six drivers in one house.
Yeah.
So yeah, they've got a problem in certain areas there, for sure. I'd just like to see this addressed sometime soon, possibly, but I'll keep, you know, keep checking back on that, yeah. But just wanted to make sure that, you know, people are aware of the situation. Like I said, it seems to be more rental houses here in Enen lately. Like, people can't afford, you know, prices naturally. A lot of people can't, put it that way. There's more rentals, and with that, like I said, that leads to possibly more people in a house at one time. So if that makes any sense to you.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's all I've got for now.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So just a couple of comments. This topic has come up in the past a few times, and people asking whether we have an ordinance, and we have never had an ordinance against parking on the grass. When I worked for the city of New Coralisle, they had an ordinance parking in the grass, so my job at that time was enforcing it. It was a little tough to enforce, but it was part of the property maintenance. And it's like, that's why you're required to have, so there's different ways to look at it. That's why you're required to have a driveway at your residence for the vehicles to be parked in the driveway, or if you have a garage, which most properties do, park it in the garage. So, but it's been around for years, and it would come up from time to time, and we have just never had anything in Enen on the books to prohibit that. So I, I think it's a good time, since we're looking at the zoning codes in general, to take a look at that. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other ideas or comments, but.
I, I agree. I, I know we've had several complaints about parking, which would be in your yard as well, but also in the street.
Yes.
On Broadway particularly.
Yes.
You know, I, I agree. I think that's something we absolutely need to look at, look at other people's ordinances, and really think about adding it to ours. Now, it would make the police, you know, have to enforce that somewhat, you know, adding more things for people to do, but I think it's.
It would be more of a property code enforced by the administrator.
What about like roadways, though?
Roadways would be, yes.
Yeah. But yeah, I, I think it's something we absolutely need to look at adding.
I mean, like you said, we're already reviewing them, so now would be the time.
It's a great time.
Yep. Now would be the time to review them.
Would anybody else like to address council this evening? If you would, you do have three minutes to address the council, and you could state your name if you would and your address, please. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. My name is Barbara White. I'm Doug's better half. And first of all, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank my dad. He was a World War II veteran, and that makes me feel like I have the privilege to stand here and address you.
Absolutely.
And I am here to support my husband and his viewpoint about the parking, but I'm also here to add my own opinion. I'm hillbilly enough that I probably just don't care too much about what it looks like, you know, where they park. They can park anywhere. I don't care if they park on their roof, really, to tell you the God's honest truth. But what I do care about is when somebody like your neighbor wants to park there because he wants to intimidate you.
Okay.
Okay? We had a minor dispute. I didn't think it was appropriate for him to allow his unattended toddler to run across our front yard. The diesel pickup truck's been just, you know, shy of our property line ever since then. So, you know, if people moving to Enen, or people living here now want a diesel pickup truck not too far from their window, I suppose that we can just let the ordinances stand as they are, which they don't cover parking. Okay, that's probably all I want to say about that. I think I, I probably said enough, but one thing I do, one other thing I want to address that's pretty important, is September is National Suicide Prevention Month.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to see the village put something on their Facebook page.
Okay.
I don't do Facebook because I, I don't like harassment, but the world has a way of finding a way to harass you anyway. So maybe I should just get me a Facebook page. I don't know.
No one likes harassment.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'm getting kind of seasoned to it now. I, I want to mention for anybody watching the streaming service or anybody here, that if they are feeling overwhelmed, or if you know someone that feels overwhelmed or struggling emotionally, it's important to take care of yourself. Nine-eight-eight is the suicide and crisis lifeline. You can call, text, or chat. It's twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. It's free, confidential. Your conversations are confidential and free. It's important, and do not feel bad for having emotions or saying how you feel. And I think that's real important.
Very important.
View of everything else. And with everything coming up, nine-eleven remembrance and, and everything else, it's real important, and it's important for the drug takeback. And, oh, I, I wish we could get some more funding for the police. You know, I, I haven't seen too many cruisers, you know, around our neighborhood lately, and I just had to throw that in there. I don't know if people.
We're trying.
I'm glad I live for saying that, but, you know.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, though.
Yeah.
We appreciate it very much.
All I have, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're very welcome.
Can we all just get along?
Would anybody else like to address council? You have three minutes. And again, state your name and your address, right here. Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Hart. I am a property owner on South Xenia Drive, seven-forty, seven-sixty, eight-ten, and twelve Matthews. There's four buildings there. On August first, on Friday morning about nine-fifteen, someone ran the stop sign on Stein Road, went over the bike path that the village owns, and into one of the buildings. Thankfully, no, I, I'm not sure about the condition of the driver, but none of the residents were hurt. But they knocked all eight units out of, of electricity. More importantly, this pu, this public access of bike and walking path did not have anyone on it at the time, or they would have been killed. The schools were not in session yet. It was August first, but it could happen anytime, and it was during broad daylight. I have a concern for residents that live there as well as use that path, that perhaps we could put a guardrail just beyond the curb that would not affect, that could help save somebody on the path as well as going forward into a building.
So I, not to interrupt you, but I had spoken with our administrator about your request, or he had spoken to me about it. I, I support an idea of, of doing something there, because this is not the first time. It's not the second time. I think it's the third time that a vehicle has gone into that.
That's.
Four, okay. Mark told me, four times. Okay, so there's been four times. That area right there, the right-of-way part, is actually in the, the Clark County's right-of-way. So the village would not have jurisdiction on the right-of-way part. The properties are in the village. The right-of-way is not in the village. So the request would have to go through the Clark County Engineers Department, but I think that we would have the support of the council to say, hey, we would like to see something done as well.
Yeah.
Because it's affecting property that's inside our corporate limits.
Well.
And I'm assuming that the council would.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Would go along with that.
Absolutely.
We just wouldn't be able to spearhead, but we would be a big supporter of that, whatever would come of it.
Well, the idea of, of wanting people to use that path, it would only.
Yes.
Help that.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
Safety of everyone involved.
So I think what the next step would be, would be for our administrator to contact the county Engineers Department, you as well, and let's try to work together to see if they can come up with some type of solution that they would be willing to provide for that, that area right there. But again, it would be them actually constructing something in their right-of-way.
We have a TCC, we have a Clark County TCC meeting on Friday, so it's possible Mr. Burr will be there.
Well, good idea.
He will be there on Friday, so it's possible that sometimes there's funding for that, that type of public safety, maintenance or construction. So we'll, we'll see if we can't bring that up to him as well on, on Friday morning.
Wonderful.
But I think we all agree that it's, it's a good idea, so.
Thank you.
Can I add something to what she said?
Come up to the podium, Mark, and state your name and your address.
Mark Kreider, seven-sixty C. So I look right at that intersection. And what she says is all true about people coming down there. Hear a lot of brakes squeal at that intersection before school, end of the day. Probably in the future, it'd be a good place for maybe a roundabout. But people drive up and down the bike path. So in the future, we may need poles. You'd be surprised how many people drive, especially at night.
Interesting.
Or golf carts or what?
Vehicles more than golf carts.
I didn't think it was that wide.
Golf.
So.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that. I've never seen that, so.
That might be something to include when you call the engineers' office, too.
Can you call, call the sheriff's office so that we can find out what's going on and, and get them stopped from doing that?
I can.
At least until we decide whether we want to put, or whether the county wants to put poles.
Yeah, that, that, that needs to come to an end. I've never seen that.
It happened more when it first was open, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mark. Would anybody else like to address council this evening? And again, please state your name and your address.
You said that for everyone, you know.
John Hart. I live in Springfield, Ohio, twenty-eight-fifty East Possum Road. And just to say the same thing that Mrs. Hart said, we've been there, I think we've owned the apartments off and on for twenty-five years, but we went in this time with a lot of major improvements, and, and the guardrail would definitely make it safer for families because somebody could have got hit. You know, I mean, it's, doesn't matter what time of day, because it's happened all different times. And three times during our ownership, and I guess another time prior.
Wow.
But I did want to thank the police department for coming through and helping us with a vehicle that might not have the right tags, or a vehicle that has a flat tire or something. That, that's really helpful to us because you can, we can ask them to do it, but we, our, our only thing is to ask them to move, where you guys can enforce it and bring them in, and that's, that's a good thing. Keeps the place clean. And we've done a lot of improvements there, and I just hope that, that you can help us with that.
Let's work together.
Yeah, yes. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address council this evening? Yes.
Well, she got right up.
My name is.
Just thought I'd note that for you.
My name is Judith Johnson. I live in seven-sixty Apartment E. Fortunately, I was not invaded. I think a guardrail should have been put up years ago after all of those other incidents that happened. I've been there for ten years. Starting in January, I'll be there for eleven, if the good learns well and the cook don't raise. So I'm recommending a huge guardrail. They have guardrails out in the country. When you come to a stop like that.
Yeah.
They've got it where left, left and right, you know, arrows on it. You can't miss that. And they're protecting a field of.
A field.
Food.
Field of corn.
Yeah.
But they're not protecting people. And I think that should be used.
Good point.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody else like to address council this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thanks for speaking. It's good to hear from you.
Rob, do you need this, this resolution signed?